All right, we're on air. Good evening. We'll call this meeting to order for the January 12th, 2023 Apple Valley City Council Meeting. For any members who have signed up to speak when your name is called, please approach the podium to address the council. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask all to rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we jump into the agenda, I just wanted to welcome Tim Benetti this evening as our new Community Development Director, his first week on the job and his first company meeting. So welcome. Next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda, and Tom, do we have any changes this evening? You want to actually get to the office first? Got you. Well, we'll do that first, and then we'll get to the agenda.
Do you want me to go first, anything?
Yes. Please raise your right hand and read with me the Office of City Office.
I, Lint Hoopa, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of Apple Valley and the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Come on. Please raise your right hand and read with me the Office of City Office.
I, John Bergman, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Apple Valley and the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Office of City Office.
I, Thomas Melander, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Minnesota and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Councilmember of the City of Apple Valley and the County of Dakota and the State of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Take a few of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will move on with the agenda, and Tom, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, we have one suggested revision to your agenda. You should find before you a replacement item. This is on item 5C1. This is Orchard Place Fourth Edition Resolution approving the preliminary plat, and you have a revised version before you tonight.
Perfect. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Bergman. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. That item carries. Next item on our agenda is the Audience Participation portion of the meeting. This is for items not on the agenda, and we have a total of 10 minutes for this item. I did not check the sign-in sheet. Pam tells me there is no one on the signup sheet. We will still offer if there's anyone here who would like to speak at this time. Not seeing anyone, we will close the Audience Participation portion and move on to the Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine and will be enacted with a single motion unless a council member or citizen requests to pull an item. We'll start with council members. Are there any items you would like to pull from consent? I see none. Those in the room, citizens, are there any items you would like to pull from consent? We have none, so I would take a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Agreed.
A motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed and consent items are approved. We'll move on to our regular agenda, starting with item 5A, which is QRA Enterprise LLC, DBA Ex-Golf Apple Valley, and Pam has this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. QRA Enterprise LLC, doing business as Ex-Golf Apple Valley, has submitted an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license and special license for Sunday liquor sales. The license is for a premise located at 7541 148th Street West, which is located in Times Square. The plan showed the restaurant will seat approximately 78 people, and the patio will serve 20 people. The applicant's target opening date is March 31st. The application also indicates that the owners are Benjamin Edward Ferret, Matthew John Judean Bronner, Samuel Guy Hinton, Dustin Lee Anderson, Aaron John Judean Heitzman, and Brian Claire Patrick. Section 11124 of the City Code requires all applicants for on-sale liquor to have a public hearing prior to the issuance of the license. On December 8th, the City Council set the public hearing for this evening. Proper notice was posted and published in the city's official newspaper, and the affidavit of publication is on file, and there have been no comments to date. The police department has completed the necessary background investigation and finds no reason the license cannot be authorized at this time. There are two items before the City Council this evening, first to hold the public hearing, and then pending any comments from the public or council. Action on the resolution authorizing issuance of the on-sale intoxicating liquor license and special license for Sunday liquor sales, subject to the receipt of necessary documents. And Mr. Ben Ferret, one of the owners of Ex-Golf Apple Valley, is in the audience this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Pam. We'll take the public hearing first. We'll address the resolution, and then if the applicant would like to come say any words, we would welcome you to come up and do so. So with that, we will open the public hearing for the application. Would anyone like to speak to the public hearing? One more opportunity. Would anyone like to speak to the public hearing on this item? One final opportunity to speak to this public hearing. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing, and we will look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the on-sale intoxicating liquor and special license for Sunday liquor sales.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Goodwin and a second for Councilmember Bergman, and I believe Councilmember Goodwin has a comment.
I didn't know that golf and drinking was allowed at the same time. I'm a little naive. They actually allow people to drink and golf at the same time. What's next?
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries unanimously. Would you like to come up and tell us what you've got going on, introduce your business?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Ben Ferret, 408 North First Street, Minneapolis. Really excited to bring Ex-Golf to Apple Valley. It's our fifth location in the Twin Cities. It's by far our biggest location, so we added in some cool stuff, a big party room. We're doing club fittings. We have a PGA professional on staff, tournaments and leagues, and it's a great place to play golf year-round in Minnesota for ages, all ages and all skill levels. Are welcome, great, great family spot, and again, excited to see you guys all out there here in a couple months.
Welcome. You have a location in what is probably the busiest intersection in the state, and so I think you've had a great spot.
Great intersection.
Agreed.
Thank you for coming to Apple Valley. We look forward to seeing you open.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 5B, which is SSA Group LLC, the 13,000 Zoo Boulevard, and Pam has this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. SSA Group LLC has submitted an application for a concessionaire on-sale intoxicating liquor license and special license for Sunday liquor sales. The license is for the Minnesota Zoo, and that premises is located at 13000 Zoo Boulevard, and the license will include the zoo property indoors and outdoors. The application indicates the officers of record are Sean Kevin McNichols, owner, president and CEO, Shannon Katie Mary Fitzgerald, owner, chief brand officer and secretary, Brendan Patrick McNichols, owner, Wells Fargo Central Pacific Holdings, Inc., owner. Here again, section 11124 of City Code requires all applicants for on-sale liquor to have a public hearing prior to the issuance of a license, and proper notice was posted and published in the city's official newspaper, and that affidavit of publication is on file, and there have been no comments received from the public to date. Again, the police department has completed the necessary background investigation and finds no reason the license cannot be authorized at this time. There are two items before the City Council this evening, first the public hearing, and second pending any comments from the public or questions from the council. Action on the resolution authorizing issuance of the concessionaire on-sale intoxicating liquor and special license for Sunday liquor sales. No representatives from SSA Group LLC were able to attend tonight's meeting, but I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Pam. Are there questions for Pam? If not, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to speak to this public hearing? Anyone who would like to speak to the public hearing? And one final opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and we'll look for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the concessionaire on-sale intoxicating liquor and special license for Sunday liquor sales. A motion from Goodwin and a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well. Thank you, Pam, for both of those. We'll move on to item 5C, which is Orchard Place Fourth Edition, as Tom makes his way forward.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. What you have before you tonight is a request by HJ Development and Rockport LLC for approval of about five items. They are looking to subdivide approximately 19 acres of property into two lots and two outlots, rezone one of those lots from sand and gravel to retail business, and then zone the second lot from sand and gravel to limited business, and then looking for site plan, building permit authorization to allow for construction of a vet clinic, and then finally, site plan, building permit authorization to allow for construction of a medical office building. The site is located in the northwest corner of Pilot Knob and 155th Street. Just for everyone's reference, you can see this is the target located in Cobblestone Lake Target, and then the Orchard Place Second Edition, where there's several buildings that are occupying this land down in this area. Property is guided for mixed-business campus and is currently zoned sand and gravel. This is the preliminary plat. As you can see, there's an outlot, one lot located right at the corner, that'd be the location of the vet clinic, an outlot to the east of that, as well as a second lot, which would be the location of the medical office building, and then finally, an outlot for future development that would be north of that. Streets that would be included would be construction of English Avenue, the extension of that from the south up to 152nd Street, which will also be extended, as you can see here, to English Avenue from Pilot Knob Road. The zoning, as you can see, they're looking at zoning, both rezoning both Outlot B and Lot 2 Block 1 for limited business, and then Lot 1 Block 1 to retail business. This is to allow for the building and construction. Hopefully, if the approval goes through, they'll be able to begin construction sooner than later. This is the site plan. As you can see, they're providing for access off of English Avenue. There would be no access off of Pilot Knob, 155th Street or 152nd Street. You can see we're just looking at writing for additional sidewalks, make sidewalk connections because what's going to happen here is there is no direct access to the outlot. So when this lot gets developed, they'll need to have access from this private drive, which will require a cross-access agreement between the two properties, the owners of Outlot A as well as the owners of Lot 1 Block 1. So we're looking to have a sidewalk that would extend into that area at this location, and then, of course, making that sidewalk connection to the south. As well as in the site plan for the medical office building, they are proposing to construct only around 300 parking spaces, and they want to hold off on some of the parking spaces on the south end, so they're looking for a proof-of-parking agreement and to see if it's needed in the future, then they would be required to install those parking spaces. Grading plan, again, it's been mass graded as part of the reclamation of the sand and gravel mining operations, so minimal grading or grading will just be needed to prepare the site for the two buildings. Utility plan, utilities will be extended along English Avenue, and then connections will be made from the public utilities with private lines into the area for the two buildings. Landscape plan, a pretty robust landscape plan, I think, looks like a good plan. We're only asking that they kind of help screen that dog run down on the south end, so providing a little bit more landscaping and some fencing there to help kind of screen that. These are the building elevations for the vet clinic, and I will get to the photos or the rendering so you can get a better look. This is just another look of that. And then finally, this is the two-story medical office building that's going to be located on the other lot, and then they give us some perspectives of what that building's going to look like from different views. So with that, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of all five items, and so you have those, the recommended action, before you tonight. I can take any questions or our representatives of the developer if you have any questions for them.
All right, let's start with questions from council. If we don't have any, I would go ahead and take the items, and then if the developer has any comments, we could take them after, if that works. So do we have a, we'll be looking for a motion to adopt the resolution approving the subdivision of 18.9 acres into two lots and two outlots.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, item one carries. Item two is to pass an ordinance approving the rezoning of Lot 1 Block 1 Orchard Place Fourth Edition from SG to RB.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, item two carries as well. Item three is to pass an ordinance approving the rezoning of Lot 2 Block 1 and Outlot B Orchard Place Fourth Edition from SG Sand and Gravel to LB Limited Business.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Goodwin, a second from Councilmember Grendal. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item three carries. Item number four is to adopt a resolution approving the site plan, building permit authorization to allow for the construction of a veterinary clinic on Lot 1 Block 1 Orchard Place Fourth Edition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, item four carries. And finally, item five is to adopt the resolution approving the site plan, building permit authorization to allow construction of a medical office building on Lot 2 Block 1 Orchard Place Fourth Edition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well. Looks like we have a couple of comments from, first, Councilmember Bergman, then Councilmember Goodwin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, to the businesses that came before us tonight. Congratulations and welcome. I've, in the past, have stated that this whole development area that's being developed right now and you're part of it is a blessing to the city, but it's amazing. Because of the last couple of years, it seemed like we just woke up and boom, business has just expanded there, so welcome, and the buildings are phenomenal, so continued success. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodwin?
I just wanted to say they're both beautiful buildings and welcome. You had a beautiful clinic like that, and that veterinary clinic is just a handsome building, so welcome.
Thank you. Any comments from the applicant at all? Not necessary, just give you the opportunity.
You need a liquor license or?
Was all with the medical clinic.
Run or roll.
Or with the dogs.
Tom, thank you. I know this was a push to get here this evening and get it done, so thanks to staff and the applicant too for working through all the pieces up until the last minute to get this here this evening, so thank you all. Much appreciated. We will move on to item 5D, which is to adopt the resolution appointing the acting mayor for 2023. And Pam, maybe we should have done this sooner, just in case I didn't make it this far.
Now, this is for the acting mayor.
Right, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, state law requires the City Council to choose an acting mayor from its council members at the first meeting of each year, and the acting mayor shall perform the duties of the mayor during the disability or absence of the mayor from the city. And included in your packet was a blank resolution appointing that acting mayor for 2023. The council is requested to adopt that resolution, appointing an acting mayor at this time.
All right, members of the council, do we have a recommendation or a motion for an act, for acting mayor?
I'll make a motion for Councilmember Tom Goodwin.
I'll second it.
All right, Councilmember Goodwin, are you willing to accept this nomination this evening?
Well, I just wondered, do we have the correct name for it, acting mayor? Now, the prior mayor, the good-looking mayor we had once, she said we should call it Mayor Pretend. So that's probably not accurate, mayor. Is it acting mayor or not Mayor Pretend? Okay, I'll go with that. I'll go with either.
I'm not sure, Tom, we want to get into what people. With that, I have, we have a motion on this resolution, Councilmember Grendal, and a second from Councilmember Bergman, I believe. I've already forgotten, to adopt a resolution appointing Councilmember Goodwin as acting mayor for 2023. Do we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That carries unanimously, and thank you. It does, it does. Here, here, here's your free pen. That's what you get with that. Item 5E is to authorize receipt of Cemetery Advisory Committee applications through February 17th to fill the vacancy, and Pam, would you walk us through this one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, Cemetery Advisory Committee member David Kemp passed away in December, and the City Council first appointed Dave to the Cemetery Advisory Committee on January 14th, 1999, so he served on that committee almost 24 years. I served with Dave on the Minnesota Association of Cemeteries for several years and was also secretary to the Cemetery Advisory Committee for many years, and I personally know that Dave was a respected member of the Cemetery Advisory Committee and a valued resource for its members. Unfortunately, Dave's passing has created a vacancy on that committee. The vacancy has a three-year term expiring March 1st, 2024. Council may wish to extend an invitation to individuals interested in serving on the Cemetery Advisory Committee to submit an application to the city clerk by February 17th. And for our listening audience who may be interested in volunteering, the Cemetery Advisory Committee is a seven-member standing committee with the responsibility to advise the council on matters pertaining to the operation care and maintenance of Lebanon Cemetery, as well as cemetery land needs. This committee votes on recommendations, which are then sent on to the City Council for consideration. The Cemetery Committee generally meets on the third Tuesday in January, April, July, and October, beginning at 2:00 p.m. at the municipal center, and six of the Cemetery Committee members must be residents of Apple Valley. The City Council may appoint one member who is not a resident of Apple Valley but is employed by or owns or operates a business within Apple Valley, provided they have a unique background or experience relevant to cemetery-related matters. At this time, all current members live in Apple Valley, so there is an option for the person applying for the vacancy to live outside of the city of Apple Valley, provided they meet the other criteria. That application is on the city's website. If the City Council is ready to start the process for filling the vacancies, staff suggests the council, direct staff to post the vacancy, and invite individuals interested in serving on the Cemetery Advisory Committee to submit an application to the city clerk by February 17.
Thank you, Pam. Are there any questions? If not, we would take a motion on this item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Melander, a second from Councilmember Grendal. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that item carries as well, so we'll move on to Staff and Council Communications, and Tom, I know we've got a small handful of items.
Tom does, he is.
Mr. Mayor, we have two announcements tonight. We're going to start with our Park and Recreation Director, Eric Carlson, with the reminder of Midwinterfest.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just want to remind the council and the community that Midwinterfest is fast, is approaching quickly. It's scheduled for Saturday, February 4th. It'll be held at Johnny Cake Park West, right behind Eastview High School. A lot of fun activities planned again this year, just to name a few. We've got the youth hockey tournament for Eastview and Apple Valley Hockey Associations. There'll be some horse wagon rides, some kite flying, some disc golf opportunities. Our police department will be there doing some garden cart rides. There'll be horse and sleigh rides. At 5:00 will be the band, Scary Newman will be performing, and then at 7:00, we will be having some fireworks. We will have food trucks on site. The Apple Valley Rotary will be selling hot chocolate and hot cider. Rascals will be there, providing some adult beverages for everyone, and so we invite the community to come out. We want to make sure that we thank our sponsors that helped make the event possible. That's the Apple Valley Rotary Club, the Apple Valley Arts Foundation, which is sponsoring the band, and the Apple Valley Hockey Association, and the Eastview Hockey Association. Both are there sponsoring. And then, depending on the temperatures, we'll be able to be inside a little bit for people to warm up, and then the MVTA will be providing a warming bus for people to step inside for a few minutes if they need to warm up during the day. So again, things start at 3:00, the band's at 5:00, fireworks at 7:00. We invite the community to come out and have a great time enjoying winter in Apple Valley.
Great. Thank you, Eric, and look forward to it and the warmer weather you've promised us from last year. Tom's got one other item, and then we'll. Sure. You want me to come down? You want to take it?
I'll do the introduction, and we'll get to that point, but good evening. One more item for you all tonight. We cannot let tonight end without a few comments about our city planner, Tom Lovelace. He doesn't know that I'm going to do this, but I'm going to do it anyway. Tom has announced his retirement from our city effective here on January 20th, meaning that this will be his last city council meeting, so we can't let him slip away without a comment at the council level. So Tom has, why don't you come up at least?
Perfect. Can't go very far.
Don't be so shy.
Oh, he's coming for you.
Tom has served as our, in our Community Development Department for over 28 years, and that is a tremendous career. He's done a remarkable job in that role. He, think of how our city looked 28 years ago. That was a whole different time, and he has been here through the transitions for all of those years. He started as our assistant planner back in 1994 and was promoted to city planner in 1999. He has helped to guide the development and has been a project manager for many, many zoning comprehensive plan amendment cases, applications from residents looking for fence variances, all the way up to what you saw tonight, redevelopment in our gravel pit area and bringing great development to our community. He has worked tirelessly with our Planning Commission and obviously with the City Council. He has been part of a team effort within the Community Development Department with some great colleagues over the time, and he has really flourished in that role as our city planner. He has been expertly handling, professionally handling, the cases that have come before him in what is basically a non-stop flow of planning cases, and he's kept up with that for 28 years. So this is a huge milestone moment in the life of our city as he earns his well-deserved retirement. Tom has made it very clear that he doesn't want a big retirement party, and in fact, he didn't want any party at all, and so we're going to maybe do some cake or coffee, or I'm not sure, next week. He's here until the week from Friday, but again, we didn't want this opportunity to pass with a city council meeting, this being your last one in a very long and prestigious career. So it is my pleasure, on behalf of the city, to present to you the token of our appreciation for your years of service and all of your help in making Apple Valley the community that it is today. So I want to present you with this apple on a stand that has your name and your dates of service, and say congratulations to you and a remarkable career.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Mayor Hoopa down for the next phase of the presentation. Next, I'd like to invite Mayor Hoopa down for the next phase of the presentation.
That ain't going to work.
That's the key to the city, it should be.
See what that opens.
Yeah. The vault of the liquor stores.
The vault and the liquor stores.
That's the one that does open the vault.
Tom, thank you. Twenty-eight years is no small accomplishment. It was by super fast rate. It seems like you probably just got here.
Yes.
On behalf of myself and the entire city council, we'll present you with this key to Apple Valley. You can try later and see if it opens the liquor store. Congratulations, and thank you for your years of service.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, would you?
I stopped by today to say goodbye, and I was thinking we were going to have a big going-away party like next week, and I was very disappointed. I thought I'd be one of those all-night keggers. But he said, no, no, he isn't going to do it. But I think one of the most important things, one of the most important things we had to remember in his service is that he had a, he could work with the last community development director we had. Now, anybody could work with that guy, should get a couple of keys to the city.
That's what it is, and works for the liquor store. Councilmembers, if you wouldn't mind, I hate to let twenty-eight years of service go by without us giving a picture with Tom, but he's in the council meeting, so since you're here, you have to indulge us, I think, at least for a picture.
Tom, I'd like you to come.
Yes. Should you get over there?
Really, why no party? Why no party? Yeah, yeah.
Move with a couple of ex-planning commission members on the side.
Let us know about the cake and everything. Thank you, Tom. You used to live in Apple Valley, right?
Yeah.
You did an excellent job.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
I just appreciate you guys tolerating me for twenty-eight years.
That's the legal authority.
So thank you very much.
You tolerated the community development.
There's only one person here who has tolerated you for twenty-eight years.
And you know it's, you know the work's been respected when your retired former boss shows up to wish you well.
I thought it was Santa Claus.
It does, it's.
You're late.
We now know what Bruce is doing in retirement, so Bruce, welcome. Good to see you. Tom, any other, any other items? Councilmember Bergman, go ahead.
Thank you. The very first thing I'll say is congratulations in the reelection of Mayor Hoopa and Councilmember Melander. The other comment I made earlier this evening, it are informal, but I think it's due diligence, and yes, we have taken some emails in regards to this division, but we, as a council and a mayor and the city staff, firmly believe that the work that has been done by our city street service department, the snowplow operators have done an exceptional job. We can also thank the Parks Division for making sure the facilities are cleaned off during all this snow, for the people to enjoy and the sidewalks to be clean, so to them, thank you.
I'd just add, that's not an eight-to-five gig, right? I see the notices come through at 3:30, 4:00 in the morning that we've dispatched people out. We know there was, especially this year, Christmas and a New Year holiday, when we had folks out instead of with their families, right, in a truck, making sure the streets were clear, so that work is appreciated. Councilmember Goodwin?
Well, Mayor, we usually get fifty-two inches of snow in a winter, and I think we've got forty-eight already, something like that. I would not only say, I would say the job was excellent and outstanding. I don't know how to say it better. Sure, there's some complaints. I've driven, and I've looked at some of these cul-de-sacs with that mountain of snow in the middle.
Looks like fun, doesn't it?
Well, maybe not for them. I mean, but the reason that cul-de-sac was built that way was for snowstorms, one of the reasons. But I just wanted to, second, Councilmember Bergman, I just think their job was, they're outstanding. I had to drive some of the major roads the next morning, and I couldn't believe how great shape they were in by 8:00. So I just want to congratulate the public works staff and public works director.
And I learned today that, thanks to Tom's newsletter, that we salted the streets in reverse, because that's the way you could get traction this week, so all kinds of fun. Councilmember Grendle?
I don't have my light on.
Oh, sorry.
But I was on so many of the streets this week for meetings, and.
Pretty sad.
Our streets are no comparison. Unbelievable.
Absolutely. Sorry, Councilmember Melander, I can't figure the lights out, I guess, it's only been a couple of years.
Prior to being on city council, I was on planning commission for over twenty years, and heard many, many presentations prepared by Tom Lovelace, and they were, without exception, thoroughly organized and well-researched, and presented in a very professional manner. Tom did a great job, and it was, he made our work really easy, and I want to tell you especially how much I appreciate that, Tom, because that's, that can be a tough job on both sides of this divider here, and thank you so much for your help.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodwin?
Yeah, I have a communication, it's a very, very sad communication. I've been on this council a while, and just this last week, we've lost two council members that I served with in the past years. Bill Holton, who was an excellent council member and a wonderful mayor, and miss him already. He was a good friend of mine, and every time we talked, which was often, within two minutes, we were just joking with each other. He was just a terrific guy. And we also lost Jenny Sterling, a wonderful lady. She was just a wonderful member of the council. We had a great council, and we all got along so well, and I got to tell you, she was just a sweetheart, and I owe her, I have to tell you, I owe her an apology.
Truly.
So I, so I know she's up there. I disagreed with Jenny one thing when I was on the council with Jenny. Jenny wanted this new city hall, and I said, no, new city hall. Matter of fact, on my reelection stuff, I said, no, new city hall, and I just want you to know, Jenny, if we would have waited ten or fifteen more years to do it, it would have cost twice as much. So you know what, Jenny? You were right, and I was wrong. First time I've ever been wrong, ever. But I can remember.
John?
I have to send the sentiments also to the Holton and the Sterling family. I'm the, Virginia Sterling stepped aside, and I'm the one that got reelected. Unfortunately, Tom Goodwin gets to sit next to the ugliest of the two council members because I took over Virginia's spot when she retired.
She was sweet.
I know, but I was, I'm the ugly duckling sitting next to you.
Come on, John, don't beat so hard on yourself. That's our job.
That's our job.
All right, thanks, everyone, for the comments. I don't think we have anything else or.
No, don't go there.
Anything else, so we'll move on to the calendar of upcoming events. The next, the next regular city council meeting is Thursday, January 26th at 7:00 PM, and a reminder that the city offices will be closed on Monday, January 16th, 2023, in observance of the Martin Luther King Day holiday. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar of upcoming events?
So moved.
I have a motion from Councilmember Grendal, a second from Councilmember Goodwin. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That carries. My to-mate on our agenda is to convene in closed session, under the exception to the open-meeting law, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the possible purchase of real property identified as parcel ID number 01-47900-01-010. Do I have a motion to convene in closed session?
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Bergman, a second, from Councilmember Melander. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And we will convene across the hall in closed session in just a few minutes.